...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have an invocation, I guess, as we're on before. Let's pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this great day. We give you thanks for the many gifts that you have given us this day. We give you thanks for one another. In the midst of the meeting, let us look upon one another as we look upon you. Let us listen to one another as you listen to us. Let us speak to one another as you speak to us with love and forgiveness, kindness and charity. May your spirit lead this meeting, lead all who participate, and once again, may we always give thanks to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. You know, look, anytime there's an executive session, I'm like, "Who's that?" I don't know how that goes.
Public input? Anybody here deny that we should speak? Members in the agenda? Any members in the agenda? Hearing item five, mayor's report. Please remember to vote tomorrow. That's all I'm gonna say about that. Getting behind this, tired of the phone calls.
Is that tomorrow?
It is tomorrow. Vote your choice tomorrow. Please remember Friday is Veterans Day. Thank you, veterans, for their service to our country and that. And thank you for those that attended the service at the college. We've given it to the last, so I thought it was a great service and, you know, a show of unity for this Lindbergh community. Whoever meetings are noted in your packet, please look for those. Moving on to the consent agenda. What is your desire?
Motion to approve.
Then moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Rule call, please.
Betty? Yes. Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carried. One item under 7A is a member for the CDB committee, Becky Anderson. Let's just, we put her name in. For that again, after many years on council and that, and involved in the community and the logic of community and that, I think Becky would be a great addition to the CDB. What is your desire?
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved in second. A discussion?
What took you so long? You know, maybe we could hear a little bit louder.
Do you wish to say anything, Becky?
No.
Now's your chance.
Yeah, you said it all. Thank you.
Rule call.
Okay. Mark?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
I just wanted Becky to see if she made anybody mad. Motion carried. Congratulations. Thank you for joining that board for us. Gary, P and Z, anything?
No report.
No report. All business. Item A is a water right lease. Greg, will you be addressing this?
Tim and I both will. Tim Dunn and I. Last meeting, this was reviewed. Council directed staff to go back and look at the annual fee for comparables. Tim Dunn worked with Scott Ross, and I'll let Tim talk about the determination of the annual lease amount.
The amount that they came upon was derived from tables that are produced by K-State. And they are the estimated cash rental rates for irrigated and unirrigated property. And the initial offering of around $2,000 was based on the 2016 rent rate, according to these tables. And 2016, of course, has been a very wet year. It's not nearly average. The rent per acre is less for 2016. So we felt that an average of the year is available would be more appropriate. And when we compared 2016 prices to average year prices, there was a, oh, a little over $5 difference per acre. And for the 150 acres that we're talking to about, it came out to $3,825. So that's what Greg and I thought would be appropriate. Just based on science from K-State, I did not agree.
Greg, do you understand that?
And the only other change in the lease is for the little term describes the formula to be used to calculate that rent per year 6310, which is the same formula, though with the updated documents.
I looked at the chart, and the chart says like $63 per acre to 2016. And it says there were 150 acres bought by $19.90 per acre. You take the difference between the irrigated property and other irrigated property, and that's $19.90 per acre.
That's the value of the irrigation.
Ah, okay, there we go. Thanks, buddy. Thank you.
Do you wish to make a motion, David?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the, what was it, $3,800 per year, or year 135.
That is a motion in our second? It's been moved in second. And David, now you have some discussion.
Well, my, I don't have any problems with this agreement or anything else. I have a problem when it comes down here that says after this, it will be automatically extended for another five years. I'm opposed to that. I think it should say it will be renegotiated for another five years. It's awfully easy to get into something that is difficult to get out of with some automatic renewal statement.
David, I'm looking for that here. Is that five, first five, second five, and then additional, like you said?
Yeah, I'm opposed to the automatic renewal. Let's see.
Is that to the end of the first five?
Right.
Good, the city wants out. The lease allows us to get out.
Yeah. It does, and I read that in here too, but it also might mean some litigation if someone doesn't agree with what the city is saying they want to get out for. I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know what is on the same. I would rather it said renegotiated. It's not good. It makes me not lawyer or anything else.
What do you think of that, Bill?
Well, I've never really been a fan of saying you'll renegotiate because all that means is you'll talk again. Nobody has any authority on where it is. If you just want to leave it for five years, just make it for five years. I mean, I don't think it has anything to say to be renegotiated unless you have a formula in place.
Do you believe there's a problem with it automatically renewing?
The only change with an automatic renewal will be that you'll re-figure the rent. Everything else will be the same.
And the new rent's already stated in here?
Well, the formula to do it is.
That's what I thought, yes.
You didn't say any more.
Does anybody else show any interest in this?
No. That was gonna be my only question. I think it's great when you're able to utilize resources otherwise go unused for good use. But my question would be, how do other, have other municipalities gone through this, and is it kind of a first done, first served basis? Or is there any means, I guess my only concern would be if property owner A has this opportunity, then property owner B is gonna say, "Oh, I know, and I could have done that. We would sure love to have done that. We didn't know that was possible."
Greg?
Well, from the city perspective, this is not something that we market. We were approached by the property owner, and even if this is approved, this is not something that we're going to market. And I can't remember the year, we were approached by the development of rural water district. And they approached the city about the wholesale purchase of water from the city. We weren't actively marketing at that time, nor did we actively, I mean, we market to the end users. We don't actively market our water rights. But that being said, that doesn't prevent party B from approaching the city and saying, "Do you have excess capacity that you would be willing to lease the water rights?" But from a staff perspective, we're not out there saying, "We have excess water rights. We would like to lease." I guess it's one way of saying.
Is this all the excess water rights that we have?
Excess would be...
Yeah, it's not, it's totally used.
Okay.
Will you say that again?
I don't like the word excess. I like the thing that is...
If you procure or whatever?
Yeah, it's water that is sent back for us, but the water that we want to lease to them, we're not using.
But can we say that 10 years from now, you're still field during that?
You will, because there won't be.
Yeah, well, this is my baby. 10 years from now, I still think you're in really good shape. I think 20 years from now, you're still in good shape.
Well, that's important to me, to know. Yeah, one thing I may add is not every area is overappropriating the water rights. You know, there's still other areas around the community that if someone wanted to irrigate a field, they could get the water rights. This particular area where this right would be diverted to is currently overappropriated, and that's why they approached the city about the option to lease the water rights.
And one further point, we can agree to this lease. It will still need to be approved by state law office, so they will look at it. They will judge it. Does that be a first step?
Tim and Greg, didn't we also do a water study, you know, based on 10, 20, 30 years out and whatever? And I assume that's all they've taken into account here with this, you know, this time and what we're looking at, so.
That's correct.
And I think that's not 3400, or whatever it was, yeah, the realization and projected that out.
Here's a question I have. If we do, like David was saying, an automatic renewal after five years, are we locking in future councils to automatically renewing that, or can we do that? I mean, I know we talked about that with other issues, that we can't lock in future councils into something, a decision to make now. That refers to expenditures. This would not be an expenditure. This would be a possibility. So that it doesn't apply then?
Well, let's go peek here.
I just, I would like to address, first of all...
Mike, you would step up, please, in your headway.
This happens to be my mother's land, so I've been doing this for a long time. The answer to the five years instead of 10 years is that it's gonna take a $100,000 plus investment to put on this land to irrigate it. And to do that $100,000 investment takes 10 years to pay that back. And that's the reason we wanted at least a 10-year lease. It's the same as if you buy a center pivot, that the tenant wants to have a 10-year lease on that land because he's not gonna invest that much money, and then next year you take it away from him. So that's the reason for the 10 years. We didn't arbitrarily pick that number. That was just a number that Division of Water Resources stated that they were willing to go out as far as 10 years for the lease, and that's why we came up with 10 years.
That's good. My question is probably gonna sound a little bizarre, but it would be, when we have, when we receive information or when we read about protecting our utilities from recommendations, from homeland security, when they talk about utilities becoming a, I want to say, a victim of terrorist threats, is by opening this line to a private individual, does it put our water resources at risk?
No. No, and the reason being is because what we are actually doing is they will not, this is well number eight, correct, Tim? They will not be pulling water from well number eight. They will actually be drilling a new well on the property that's two miles north of town. So there will not be an interconnection between the two systems whatsoever. What we are doing is leasing the water right so that it can be used at that new well location.
But presumably, it's been being home from the same pool.
Correct.
Smoky Valley, maybe.
Which is all determined by the state, the pools and all that stuff.
I guess part of my earlier question is, have other municipalities done this?
Yes, I haven't made of them, but speaking with Scott Ross, who used to be with the Division of Water Resources there, they have done it. It's not, it's not overly common. It's not uncommon.
There's no process. It's been, I just want to make sure we're going through the right process, appropriately, not off the right. I understand from Division of Water Resources is there needs to be some level of agreement between the parties before they'll consider it. And they have the final, I mean, both parties could agree to this, and it can still go to Division of Water Resources and say, "It doesn't equal what I'm looking for." I mean, there's still that potential. I guess so. It's safe to say that if we would agree to this, that tomorrow we won't have someone else come in and say, "They have paid us twice that amount for the water."
It could happen. Sure, it could happen.
But, I mean, this is a fair market, but I don't see anybody being able to afford to double that price and make a profit from, you know, the infrastructure that they'd have to put in.
Additional questions? No legality issues still?
Not that I've seen. I looked at the lease.
Okay. Additional questions? Everybody understands what you're voting on? Rule call, please.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you all for your work on that. Item 10, new business. Carry, you're gonna approach... Give us the short, then we'll get a motion, and then we'll go from there. Recommendation is?
We need to repair the motor.
What is your desire?
I recommend motion to approve an amount not to exceed $1,400 to the park grasshopper's 13D.
Second. Then moved in second. Gary, give us a presentation on that.
This is our newer mower.
Is our newer mower?
Mower, yes. The other one is an '09 grasshopper, a little smaller diesel engine. It gets worth repairing. Similar reflection mono-motor, easily run over $2,000. Little over $1,000. It will spend including fluids and associated parts. It is well worth the expense. And we do use this mower quite a bit. We mow it quite a bit. In fact, we mow close to 50 acres of grass every other week. Sometimes everything. So these mowers can allow, it's not an unexpected expense. If it had been under $1,000, then we wouldn't be standing here talking, but you have to approve it and go with that.
Questions, Gary? That's all that you said. Maybe new drive belts?
And...
How would I say?
A smaller number of, it's only a $1.50 budget.
Yeah, I'd say just going to come off as five years old when they're around. Could just carry that somewhere else. There's a $1,400 still around.
Yes, all right.
Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Ego?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty? Yes.
Motion carried. Item B. This could have been old business, couldn't it?
Yeah, it goes further.
Been around a while, I understand.
It's really old business.
Let's talk about the EMS building, the work we stand today.
Distributed in front of you are two documents, a letter from Wington Company, along with a spreadsheet, in trying to get the cost of the new EMS building down to the budget of $700,000. The original bid was $800, excuse me, $803,000. So a week ago, Friday, Chief Berger and I, the architect, met with the general contractor as part of a value engineering process to determine ways to decrease the cost of the project. The letter describes those particular items that were, actually, the majority of them were a deletion. There was one, two additions that added to the cost. Going through them. Item number one is piling the lead, which would be the lead filing on the north side of the building, and move the stairway to the west side. This would allow that piler to be deleted. And the D-DOT for doing that is $42,650. Some changes to the pre-engineered metal building. Remove the clear story, stair overhang, and go to a straight table roof. Move the building ridge line to the west. And the O-R-O lights were actually going to be a clear story. Those will be actually moved down to the side walls, northern and south walls of the ambulance bay. Change the wall panel gauge to an SP-40, which is a 26 gauge standard finish. And then delete the metal liner panels on the ceiling of the ambulance bay. That was a D-DOT $14,700. The recommendation, I said there were two additions. There were actually three. Upgrading the roof to a standing seam roof, that would add $7,000 to the cost of the project. That would be, instead of a flat seam roof, to implement, this is to implement leaking issues in the future. Upgrading the finish on the siding to a Kynar 500. That's, let's see, $1,800 addition. We had a, the generator was sized to operate the full building, including the elevator. So the option there is to replace the generator with a 19.5 kilowatt residential model generator, and then delete the voltage because it will be in a protected location. With that change, we're able to deduct $10,000.
And that's using 3 and not 3B, is that right?
Using 3B, which is instead of 3A. 3A was the marker generator that would operate the elevator and everything.
And that savings would go to...
Would be $10,000 if you go to, and I'm tracking down the color expression here. The next item, four, is to delete the elevator, but keep the shaft and the structure, and then infill the openings of the shaft wall. This is so that in the future, in a future build-out, the elevator could be installed, and the basement could be used for more than storage. Additionally, 4.1, in the interim, while it's not an elevator, is putting a floor on the ground floor level of the elevator shaft so it could be used as a storage closet. Deleting the elevator was a savings of $47,850. Adding the floor in the elevator shaft at ground floor level adds $1,850. That does include door flooring. Basement finishing, deleting the plumbing fixtures. Rough ends would still remain. Delete the basement HVA system entirely. There wouldn't be an exhaust fan in the basement. Delete all drywall framing insulation. Delete doors and frames. Delete 80% of the outlets. Low voltage rough ends, so there would be some outlets, but not a lot. Do not paint the basement. Add sprinkler heads for storage condition. Then these server room finishes and HVAC in the server room, electrical to the main. That would deduct $20,150 from the project. Moving on to item 6A, the general contractor recommended deleting all fore coverings and adding concrete staining. But showers to remain, that would have been the D-DOT of $15,500. What the option was of that was to have a $10,000 flooring allowance. Also really looking at showers. It had a lot of base specified anyway, but instead of doing a tile wall to save on cost, doing modest walls, save on labor and that. So end up with a $10,600 D-DOT. On the 7A, the discussion was deleting, or the amount of fire suppression within the building, whether the ambulance bays actually needed a sprinkler system in it. What we came to is item 7B, which is more of a residential type sprinkler system, and it would only be in the residential living areas of the facility, not in the ambulance bay. It would require some additional layer of sheet rock to provide a two-hour burn-through rate at a 90-minute door, and that would save or deduct $10,000. Some miscellaneous deductions, switching out the ceiling tile for a less expensive tile, and also using the door hardware that comes standard from the manufacturer. The manufacturer, what they've specified is manco doors and windows. And then the shades, the roller shades that have been specced, deleting those also. That saves $4,700. The general contractor didn't want to do the shop cabinets or lockers, uh, he said we have to have those. So the subtotal of the deducts was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The contractor wants a value engineering fee, uh, forty thousand dollars. And the contingency allowance is, uh, one percent. And that brings the project to seven hundred thousand dollars.
Questions?
What's the point of keeping the basement if there's no elevator or nothing else? There's a server room down there, right? And that's it?
Yes, that's the point. You mean, keeping the elevator shaft?
Uh, keeping the basement.
Keeping the basement, uh, storage?
Uh, but probably expensive storage though compared to just.
Uh, for future, uh, build out, expansion, training. Uh, the way, the direction of EMS services are going, at some point in time, I can't tell you when.
Yeah.
We will be a, at least a, at minimum, uh, full-time day, volunteer night, but more likely, full-page staff.
But my assumption would take, this forty-seven thousand dollars worth of savings isn't going to be forty-seven thousand dollars to put an elevator in later, it's going to be a lot more to put in, I would assume, than to do it now while the building's building. So I mean, that'd probably make our price tag go up pretty high to do it later, that, that's my assumption.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, inflation comes into play and putting the elevator in later would be more, more expensive, but our maximum budget is seven hundred thousand dollars. This fund cannot handle a greater debt service than a seven hundred thousand dollar budget.
What was the floor plan for the basement, I mean, what was all to be included down there?
Uh, server room, uh, office space, and then a large training area and some storage. It would have had, it would have had a restroom in there also.
Because it was also looked at as a potential command center.
Correct.
In the event of a natural disaster.
Correct.
Greg, I'm going to get down and, and pick here on the, delete the floor trough drain in the ambulance bay. Is that, one is going to be adequate, two is just overkill and getting cleanup and water and all that? Or that's one of those things that when it's, you back in ambulance and covered in snow, it's going to melt and.
The difference is, is with two, they were going to locate the troughs directly under where the ambulance went back in.
Okay.
Under, going with one trough saves a little bit of money and the floor would be sloped to that center trough between the ambulances.
Okay. Trust in the contractor that it's sloped, right?
Correct.
Like I said, just forty thousand makes the trust back.
Is there any risk management, are there insurance issues eliminating the, or reducing the fire sprinkler system in the bay? We have, uh, had the general contractors talked to Bamford Sprinkler. The architect has referred to the code and also talked to, and it says, uh, sprinkler system company had a great bid and also the state architect has signed off on it, so.
With the additional rock?
Yeah, that was the trade-off area, the fire barrier between the bay and the residential space. Assuming the value engineering fee is not virtual. We tried to negotiate, um, I, his response, that being the general contractor, said that the estimator that he had on this project is no longer with him. And I think he had ducked, well, I know he had ducked, he seemed to have been less. But he, so far, he's been unwilling to negotiate on it, even though we've tried. Percentage basis, that's very. We don't have options almost. That, that would just start, it would go with the whole process. Yeah. So that, that's an option. If you do that, uh, you'll notice an intent. Provide the, uh, ten thousand dollars for you and the general contractor, so you step away from the contract. So based on what you've described, have we lost so much of the functionality of the building that it still works? I guess. I would ask Chief Berger, since he had more intimate experience with.
So I would say yes.
Thank you.
The answer is, we've lost the intent?
No, I think we have.
Enough functionality, we're going to, uh, supplies. I think you're going to hear.
Wasn't expecting that answer. I want to build, it's the thing that's why I'm on. Been at this for what, six years? We're trying to put the ceiling.
The basic function is you get a clean space for your ambulance and that with some space behind future possibilities, is that?
Right. Well, and even if we start over again, our base fund was, this was the maximum that the budget could allow. Right. Funds wise, so that's really not going to change much, starting over. It'd be pretty much the same, doesn't it?
I would imagine, you know, the difficult part when we started this project, the economy was down. Construction prices were a little bit, I mean, rephrase that, were lower than they are now. There's much more demand in the construction industry than there was when we started this project.
And this is with the, this is taking the USDA.
The rule of the law, yes, thirty-year loan.
Wouldn't be funded, expected to pay the, all of us. The ambulance fund would be.
Correct, yes.
Paying work on this.
That's correct. I would agree, we still need this building. And yes, it, putting an elevator in later may cause more, but that's life. I think we need to go ahead with this now.
Is that a motion?
I thought we had one.
Do we?
No.
No.
I saw move that we, Robert Adam, when they caused their, as outlined.
David has motion to take it as outlined, dividing the hundred thousand, is there a second?
Second.
The move is second, and do you have additional questions for Greg or Tim?
What's the timeline given, if we accept this?
For completion? Or for start? Uh, well, I don't have a hard date, um, starting, but they want to get started in November. You know, part of the issue, I mean, you'll see.
November of this year?
In November of this year. I mean, you'll see some work happen real quick, you'll see the survey or the, uh, site layout. You'll see the pad order. But it's a pre-manufactured building or the shell of it is. So that gets spec-ed out, ordered, and then that gets delivered on site. So there'll be a period of time that you really won't see anything happen. Uh, timeline, the, uh, original bid was two hundred days.
Did I see where there was a deduct for, for extending the number of days on construction too?
Uh, in the proposal, no. One of the things that, as we were meeting with the, uh, general contractor, one of the arguments they gave was because of the number of construction days and liquidated damages. That's why they wanted, part of why they wanted the forty thousand dollar value engineering fee. That if they incur liquidated damages, and we discussed extending the construction time period to help avoid liquidated damages to, um, break that value engineering fee.
Isn't the, isn't the last voltage item under term conditions?
Oh, that's right, it is three hundred days.
Three hundred days.
Does that mean, like, working days? How do they figure that?
It says three hundred days.
So we extend the construction, but we did not get a reduction.
Correct.
Yes.
Cory, you want to go lean on these guys?
No.
You think. Greg, you think this is the best we can do right now?
I will tell you, I struggle with the value engineering fee, because this is a bid project.
Yeah.
And typically on a bid project, when you go back and do a value engineering process, you don't go in and then add a, a value engineering fee on top, I mean, you can, you can bid projects different ways. Just because, you know, deleting pilings and moving stairs to the west, deducting forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, that's maybe how they bid the project. In other words, you can put your profit in different areas when you bid a project. For those things that you knew, know that your construction team does extremely well, you can bid that, knowing that at a price level, that you know you're going to have some margin in what they do compared to your competitors. In other areas, you don't necessarily, aren't as strong. And therefore, you're either padding or you put it at cost, so when you deduct it, it, uh, isn't a true reflection of cost, it's more of a reflection of how it's bid.
Which, yeah, well, that also kind of explains why you go after things like roar shades, floor tile, standardized door locks on the manufactured door, because those are costs you can't, he can't, the, the contractors can't control.
Correct.
But he can control drywall. Because he's got a good team that can do that in half the time.
Or he does a good subcontractor more.
Okay, that, anything. Well, I guess, I guess my concerns are, and I, I understand where we are, but, um, and I understand that we asked for the value, um, what's it called, the value?
Engineering.
Yeah, um, but it's really become a very stripped-down project. I, I guess I share a concern that, that they don't have it. I, I can't imagine, I can only imagine that an elevator is going to be much more expensive to place in a shaft than to put it in during the process of construction. Now, a builder, I'm not. Which would be, um, it seems to be common sense, but it seems like, um, whether you get, get really, really good.
Well, we're going to have this building till death do us part, so the shaft. So why not have the shaft there? Okay, we're kind of getting a shaft, so to speak, in some regards, but it is going to increase, in my estimation, going to increase the functionality of the building, yeah. At a later date, we may have funds from somewhere else or whatever, so we can afford to put that in and increase the usefulness of that building. I agree, I'm, I'm not real crazy about the forty thousand dollars, but I, I think they know that I've got us.
I was going to say, I'm going to laugh if I'm an old man someday and I'm in that building and I say, oh yeah, there's an elevator shaft right there, and they're going to go, what? Yeah, there's supposed to be an elevator there, but I'm like seventy years old or something. I mean, you know, sometimes things get out of hand, so hopefully all of us are here long enough to reap that fruit. When we have the money to do that.
You know, it's like, um, it says, we've dedicated to the city council for the twenty sixteen.
Yeah, we got placards on it, so.
One of, one of the things is, from a co-convoiance standpoint, the maximum number of people under this arrangement right here that we can have in that basement at one time is five. So if you're going to use it for another purpose other than storage and having five people down there at one time, you're going to have to put an elevator in it. But another change is, if we put an elevator in at a later date, we don't have to meet the state architect's requirement. We can meet the requirement of the standard code. The state of Kansas adopted a stricter elevator code for their public buildings than the normal code for public buildings, which causes the cost of the elevator to go up. How much, I can't tell you, but it is more expensive under the state of Kansas revised code than it is under the standard code.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Are you calling sit tonight before midnight?
Nope.
Because it says that this offer expires on November seventh, twenty sixteen?
Yes, and he knows the meeting's tonight.
Okay.
And he knew that before we prepared this presentation today.
So thanks for explaining that, because I, that was one of my questions I wanted to get to, was what was requiring the elevator first of place, based on occupancy and poor land management, so that is like.
It's unusual for the states to require themselves to be something stronger than, yeah, somebody else. The second thing I would say is hopefully, in the future, when we get to a paying service in that, the person county will step up, you know, with some more funds, and I think they have come, once maybe with an increase in many years.
We're not getting, no, well, from when we started in two thousand, one or two, we were receiving less now than we were then. Um, it was eighty-six thousand, and then they cut it to seventy-nine thousand, and just this past year, they increased it to eighty-one thousand.
That's pretty painful on that, so. So you're going to go to, you know, take the funds a little. So, let's have, uh.
Well, you, you've got the five people in the basement, but you only got yourself, what are these other three?
Sharon in the basement. So during the tornado, no, 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 come back. I get the first five minutes. Roll call, please.
Uh, Betty, yes, Blaine.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eno?
Yes, Mark?
Yes.
Tim, are you happy?
I'm very happy, thank you.
I agree.
All right, we do not have an executive session tonight, so we are going to start with Holly in CDB.
You guys bailed on that. I'm ashamed.
This is what gets interesting.
Thank you. I'd say, well, you should do a check on yourself.
Way to clear a room, Holly. We got thirteen events at the conference center right now, but it's only five for weddings, so, and more meetings. It's a really, really good month. Attendance-wise, it was thirteen hundred people, which were our conference center in the month of October, and that equated to two hundred and forty-two hours for central management, so a lot of hours put in, a lot of time with staff. Very, very good month. And CDB-wise, um, we have had a really good month as well, and a lot of, uh, things you've heard in your Friday reports. We've had some nice, um, notice by some magazines, we've had some great travel riders coming to town. And out of that, not only do we have an article coming up in the March and April issue of the Midwest Edition of Triple A Magazine, but we also have, um, two more articles out of our Solana insert that just came out this past week that they will be picking up and using in their publications as well. So one of those will be on Cornell, and then the other one, it's still need to find out what they're doing. So, um, kind of exciting. And one of the things that was brought to our attention, I don't know a lot about it yet, but I want to put it on our radar. And the Triple A rider was in town this past week, she was with Abby Richardson about, um, the opportunity to, um, file, um, the paperwork to becoming an S. she was with Happy Richardson about the opportunity to file the paperwork to become a Nesco's creative city. There are only five currently in the United States, and the smallest one is the Dukka Kentucky, which is twenty-five thousand people. Austin, Texas is in there, San Jose, New Mexico is in there, so much larger communities, but it's based on different things. Having really great food is one possibility, having great filmmaking capabilities, probably don't have that here. Probably the two categories that we would look at if we were to do this would be music or it would be arts. And so we're currently looking at that, and the Dukka Kentucky CDB director has contacted, and she has agreed to send me information as to how they complete this process. So we'll be just taking a look at that a little bit closer. Don't know if it's something we can do or not, but we're going to look at it. So those have been really good things. The last thing I don't put on our radar, last year, we hosted, and Corey put us together, Leadership Kansas get together for the class of twenty fifteen. It was an optional activity to come to Linsport, and they came for an evening, and they did some shopping downtown, and then missly, they just met at the conference center and had Swedish buffet, and the dancers from High School King then performed, and they had a really good time. Good enough that they contacted me this last week and they would like to come again. Interestingly enough, they picked December the third, which was also the day the twenty sixteen Leadership Kansas class was determined, and they want to come to Linsport. So we will have two back-to-back Leadership Kansas classes coming on December the third to enjoy our community. So I will be looking at how we potentially put those two classes together and do an event with them possibly in the evening, so I'm going to look at that. So good things, I think, coming out of this, visits, and hopefully some things that bring business, meeting-wise, presentations. Any questions coming?
Holly, do you have any year-to-date numbers for the assumption?
For numbers of meetings, events, last time we were at ninety-two, is that right? Ninety-two so far for this year that we've booked events.
Is that over seven thousand people or something? Is that right? Or does that number stay going on? Is that right?
Yeah, it's definitely over seven.
That compares out of previous year.
Very well.
And exceeded the budgeted expectations, didn't it?
We are doing well mainly in that our expenses have been managed very well. Amy has done a phenomenal job of managing expenses, sort of staffing and looking at how we manage and just how we do the business. So it's been good. Not where we'd like to be yet, but we're good.
You said thirteen events, five weddings, then including in the first.
Yeah, we included five weddings, the rest of the meetings.
Our cleaner is doing all right for you?
We're working at that. That's been tough to do. I think the biggest challenge right now with that is if we have a lot of events in a week, having that one so we clean is tough, and that's maybe that we're having to figure out how to clean in between. I mean bathrooms, when you have an event that's a hundred or a hundred and fifty people, they don't stay clean, and so you have to clean again before you have a number of events that week. If we have three or four events in a week, that means that we have to look at how we do that differently. There's two floors. Yeah.
So the fact that we're having more events, it's not really reflective of who's doing the cleaning necessarily, it's just the fact that we're having more events and stuff to keep it clean in between.
That's a lot of this management hours that's clean, she's doing a lot of that clean also. We have new cleaning staff come on, I think they're learning some things. We have cleaning staff that resigned or positioned to take another job, and our new cleaning staff has probably been less than what we would have hoped, and it's been very difficult to find someone to come in, and some of the rates are, I mean, what they want to come in clean once a week. So looking at that, and I think a couple that are working at it now, they're good people, and I think they have got some things that we would like to have more attention to a bit, maybe swapping with that, we'll see.
What about maintenance? Okay, what do you say about maintenance?
Maintenance has been a challenge too. Amy, do you want to come speak to that? That's probably even better to come first.
I, um.
Do you do light bulbs too, like clean windows on the windows?
Excuse me.
The main issue though is when I was first contracted a year and a half ago now, almost, we were, we almost doubled, right, the workload that was at that time. So at that time, cleaning, changing light bulbs, things like that weren't as big of a deal, but now when your time is limited because your workload is almost doubled and you want to maintain and expand that, that's where the issue's coming. So those things that are not my expertise, although I'm very awesome at it, I'm very good at it. You know, those are just things that aren't really in my scope of work.
Sure.
That I cover now, not that I'm complaining, but just places where that infrastructure has got to start happening, or else if we get more events next year, which hopefully we do, then there's going to be bigger, bigger, bigger problems. So we don't want to lose the making, we don't want to lose the quality of the facility because we don't have time to keep it up.
It's things like changing out light bulbs, water softeners, salt filters in the air units.
Wearing the stuff down the drain.
That seals the drains over out, which is fixed, it, that was fantastic.
I'm assuming that if you weren't having to spend time cleaning toilets, that you would have more time to bring additional groups.
Well, that's, that's my point, and like a busy month like October, one thing that I was talking to Holly about was I'm worried that I'm too busy maintaining, just, you know, keeping it afloat in a busy month like that, that I'm not having time to sell. So when I know October's a big booking time for meetings, then I'm really anxious that I'm missing that time to sell. There's just only so much time.
Additional questions, anybody?
So I guess, what are some of our options? I mean, obviously, you don't feel like you're spending your time like you should be, and I agree. What do we need to look at? What are recommendations from the two of you?
I think that we're, we are kind of in the process of putting that together, I talked with Holly a couple weeks ago about it, but I mean, on the surface, having somebody to come in and clean or even reset, like if we have back-to-back events, somebody to do the second floor, that's a lot of space to get cleaned. So on the surface, those are things, but I'm more worried about talking through the strategy and the infrastructure of how the sunstorm falls into the city's scope of work because that's where, in the long term, I think you have the issue. These other things can probably be completed on the surface fairly quickly and fairly easily, but if that's not all going to fall into the way the rest of the city works, then it's always going to compete. Does that make sense? So I think that I don't have an answer right now. I think that it's something that we all would need to talk about, my needs over there and how that falls in with everybody else's time, because they don't have time to either. So I think that's, for my community, that would be the larger issue. So it's a strategy thing.
Right now, I think trying to maintain costs, and Amy, I told you, she's done a good job. We don't love testing her to have to come in all the time to do small things that we can have someone else do. And Craig has been good to come in and do some things. Staff has been good to fill in some situations, but with staff, we have to look at the maximum hours we can have per year, or start on a little bit, who's going to fit and things like that, so we have to manage staff.
Will you say Craig, are you speaking of your husband?
No, 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 okay. No, okay, listen.
Okay.
But even he's really busy, you know, it's just the more the conference center is, the more hardware you have on your furniture, the more hardware you have on people, not just me and the whole city staff, you know, not just me. So I think that that's where, that's where we need to be thinking about those problems because those aren't going to go away with hiring another community help, you know.
What can we do right now for City Hall for maintenance needs and for cleaning needs?
We have a contract for cleaning, maintenance needs, we contact whoever, depending on the particular issue, contract the respective service provider.
Holly, in your report, did you say that Amy's hours, that the sunstorm management hours were two hundred and forty-two last month? And so that means fifty-sixty hours overtime? I mean, but you're a contract employee, so.
Yeah, I averaged thirty hours a week. Technically, I think we try to shoot around more thirty because of the contract is, so we need to buy and make a break, but I'm not going to let it fall. I'm going to get done what I need to get done, and so it's not, you know, it's not every month being good, it is becoming a lot more consistent, I mean, probably since June, we just pick up, pick up, pick up, and it'll slow down here in the winter, but that's something that you have to think about.
And we're beginning to have some interest in just two weeks ago, I had someone approach me wanting to plan an event for twenty nineteen, but it's a good-sized group, and they don't want to be overnight outside of the community. So we're trying to figure out those things, and I think we can get a couple of us and just get over that hurdle of people determining that they can do that, that's okay to have to drive us to line up or to person if they all want to stay together. Once we get over that hurdle, I think we can begin to start visiting more and more of these events. Our goal would be, I mean, we've talked this entire last year, our goal would be over a hundred and twenty-five events per year, and I think if we were to do that, and Amy goes absolutely, we would be, I mean, that would be our numbers a lot better, a lot lower than you.
Yeah, I think, I don't do math well, but I would think if we had two or three months more in this calendar year, we would have been pretty close to breaking the limit, I
Not considering, yeah, not considering.
I can't remember what I talked about, so.
We, we think since there are three months of this, it's not scary at the forefront of compliance.
Questions? Thank you all very much. Do I have to call somebody, or is it Tim to come forward?
It's about me, Tim.
He's a closer. He's still basking in his, you know, his.
It's about me.
While I'm passing around, talk to you a month or two ago about a different way to do maintenance on our water towers. Basically, I've been talking to a firm that moved data to renovate the in-town tower completely, just front, and then pay a yearly fee to them, and that, you would never have to be responsible for painting or maintenance ever again. The proposal, the page with the color on it, this proposal is to do the interior and exterior renovations and repairs for twenty-six thousand dollars in front, and then each year for the next nine years, fourteen thousand ninety-nine, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars a year. That would include lifetime warranty on all cordages and workmanship, visual inspection included annually, detailed federal report, washout inspection, all tank maintenance repairs, future exterior and interior renovations, emergency service, and engineering service. That's all included with that hundred and twenty-six thousand plus basically fifteen thousand a year. He had indicated that the fifteen thousand a year would be subject to, they generally put in a three percent per annum, and I said, I don't think that whole is true anymore, so if we do this, we want to try to tie it to the annual percentage rate instead of set three percent. So those are services that would be covered, and if you look on the type of the page, they're under utility service, the first year is a hundred and twenty-six thousand, and then for the next nine years, I just put three percent on, you know, to go around on this thing. And after ten years, you've got two hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars invested in that, and what it would ever be was, would be that annual fee. If you do it like we've been doing it, and a hundred and forty thousand is what we budgeted this, for next year, and so we've been making eighteen ninety-five a year for annual maintenance. The contractor, they are not satisfactory, we have to move on, I'm just making the assumption that it's going to be two thousand a year if we do some kind of maintenance. And then you get up to the tenth year, and then you have to paint the tower again, and that is the other forty, that three percent for nine years. So at the end of ten years, with this maintenance program I'm proposing, we have two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in it versus three hundred and forty-four if we maintain it on our own, we would have all the benefits that are listed.
Tim, what is a packed mixing system?
Okay, that's, that's something I still need to study on. With older tank like we have, the size of it, during the summer, we don't get, we don't get turnover on the tank. Basically, the water at the top stays there because it's hotter. The inflow, the inflow pipe is in the bottom, and the cooler water's in the bottom, and that's where everything goes out, so we don't get a mixing with the water. So it's something that they think, well, it's what they're proposing, it's not a requirement, and I'd want to study that some more, but it would be a mixer that could circumvent the water of the tower so it was all consistent. It supposedly would help us maintain our cordages visual, but we don't have any trouble with that anyway, so I'm not sure if it's something he's talking to me about.
How long? How long has this company been in business?
Oh, I don't know how long it's been in business, but they've got a massive, massive client list. They are the, are you familiar with Canadian Paint?
No.
The industrial companies, that's as good as it gets, there's, I'm not worried anything in the world is better, it's just the best, and the largest utility of Canadian Paint in the country. So that's how many clients they have.
These other figures you have on the comparison of the two, you get down to year ten of the, this program you were recommending, and nineteen thousand, but supposedly in year eleven, would we start the sequence again?
No, it would be nineteen, assuming the three percent per year, which I would say we negotiate down to whatever the actual percent or annual grade is, it'd be the nineteen thousand plus three percent.
Okay, so not, not you wouldn't have to.
We never paid any. They totally all paid for this. Thank you. So I'm asking for, you know, if you could tell me that this really does sound interesting for you, I will pursue a formal offer, informal contract, and perhaps have any agreements you can do for study session if that's what you like.
Well, over ten years, we would save sixty thousand dollars.
Yes.
And then not have to do the big project again, in your opinion.
Yeah, they, they would do it. I mean, the project would get done.
Yeah.
Because you're paying for it a year at a time, all at once.
So this is the in-town tower, what about the out-town tower?
I think we need, well, we just had that painted two, three years ago, but.
Two?
Two. And I don't think it's, it wasn't a great job, I don't think it'll last that long, but I think we definitely should get on that program. I mean, I think this is a good program, I think it will save money, I think it will save us a lot, I think things are done because. I think things will get done because they'll be done by, you know, that, that's how they make their living to be able to tell people, say, I can do this maintenance and then they do it. I think we could get on this program for the townie tower, make sure it's doing the way we expect it to go and then, you know, maybe on the standby. And of course, the number would be significantly lower than they could obtain.
If you're gonna retire in a short amount of time, could you do the other tower?
Uh, they took away my money.
Will it be hot in town and cold out there outside or anything? Blaine, you have a question?
The tower is budgeted to be painted in 2017, is that what you said?
And the, the difference in those prices is when, when they put together, and I got this one twenty-six, they hadn't put in for the logo. And it's gonna be some, you know, if we do words, it'll probably be three or four thousand dollars to do a sign like a dollar horse, whatever, it's gonna be ten thousand and one hours per side. So that's the difference between the one twenty-six and one forty.
Corey can make that.
So if, if it's interesting to you, I'll pursue it.
Does anybody want him not to pursue it?
I think it's good.
I think it's good.
Go forth and pursue.
All right. Any other questions?
Where are we at, what are, where are we at on inspection service since you are leaving soon?
Uh, I think I told you, I'm talking...
Is there any...
No, I think Craig talked to him at the league, who knew whoever it was. And they are pretty tied up in the, the artificial contract. I think they said late in November, we might start seeing something.
Yeah, they're trying to finalize the master agreement, including the Kansas municipalities. Once they get that finalized, they'll roll it out to the different municipalities in the state for consideration in rural and western. And to visit where...
Tim, see me up front.
I have, oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's...
Just ask one more question.
Sure.
What, what do we, I mean, when we put painting on the tower into our capex budget every ten years, is, that's been our path now?
Yes.
What, do we set aside some every year for that, for that? And about how much is that?
We just budget it on a as near basis, so...
So we don't set anything aside like we have...
We have a capital reserve program. So...
Okay. Thank you.
We transfer fifty thousand dollars a year into the capital water reserve fund.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine.
Now you know where you're standing too.
I don't know how I can follow that, but it's, it's a good presentation. Thank you, Tim. I guess I just wanted to come up and thank the city council for providing funding for extra security for the college. I tell you that we get beef with the college and for right now, they want us to beef up security at their events, sporting and special events. And I didn't know if it would be that big of a deal, but wow. I have sent really great dividends for both police department and for the college as well as the school district. We started doing it at the schools, USP four hundred games as well. Just in the last two weeks, I think we removed twelve people from games. We prevented, it's the big KW about the soccer game, we had to keep the fans charging the field and cut them all out. So, um, heard beneficial, I'd say thank you and then it's, it's working really well for us.
Does that mean, Tim, that you're not doing the eight-to-eight thing or whatever it was all night long?
That's correct.
Okay.
You know, we sat down and, and I visited with the college and right now, they're maybe concerned at this point.
For the, the events?
Just for the events. That may change, but for right now, it's...
The hours recorded less and will be approved.
Correct. So probably gonna be studying about security for some of the USP four hundred games as well. Tim, that's interesting that you say that because that is nowhere near the program that I thought we approved for the use of the officer to be present and to build relationships and things like that with the college students, you know, on campus. For them to come to us and say, I wish you'd beef up security in a sporting event was nowhere, anywhere on my radar what I thought we talked about and what the, the money would be used for in this last quarter of the year. I'm glad to hear you say you feel that it's done, but for us to be there to remove rowdy KW fans from a game, I'm not sure is what I pictured that prudent use of that would be to build a talent and gallery relationship with that. I, that's my thought on the subject. And I, and you know, when we talked about it, we, we told them that that was available for them. To identify what exactly they wanted from us. And they came back with, this is what we would like and we'll be right back.
And I guess it will matter whether things happen eight-to-eight or whatever that is. If it comes out that, oh, we need to go back to that concept.
I think this is a good, because right now, there's... Could change, but right now, this is what they're saying.
Well, I think it's pretty important that you're having the conversations with the college and the two entities are working together to see what's gonna be the best use of time and the manpower, resources. I, I mean, I agree with Bill that that's, what you said we're doing is not exactly what was presented to us, but I still think it's important to have those conversations. And if both entities think that they're getting the best bang for our buck, or their buck, or two bucks, they...
I think you're right to first about my buck.
I suppose you're still having interaction, I mean, you still have the interaction with students, with faculty, at the games.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. More students probably see you at the games than they would at eight-eight, I'm gonna say. Right, a lot of people are around.
Were we staffing those games at all? So we have a, so you're there where we have them.
That's correct. They have front security, the security officer to do the events. We're staffing.
I actually think that that might be a broader, because we were looking at putting somebody there eight-to-eight to prevent a repeat of the chompy incident or something similar, something worse. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay. So I think the, I, I think, I think the high visibility by not only the college athletes and students and the stands and the community at large certainly creates an awareness that our eye is on what's going on. And I think that's a, and like, and like was mentioned before, it's still a good opportunity to develop relationships.
I think, I see the steps. I mean, this is a step, taking the first step. I don't know what this work's gonna end up, and they end up being eight-to-eight. But right now, I think we've taken the first step and so far it's working very well. Are you even in a trade or dollars? Yes. Any other questions for Tim?
How are we doing with chickens?
I have a slight...
I'm just curious for a while.
Any other others, thirteen? Motion to adjourn? Second over there, I thought, all those in favor, say aye. All those, safe signing. Thank you all very much.